You can't slide.
If you had more people.
But the whole object is for the PVC to slide over your metal pipe. So if you had a long piece of pipe, that, and you had your goaltender in foosball, which is one, and that's a long, you can't go from one edge to the other if that piece of pipe is x along, because your object is to hold on to PVC and not let go. That's supposed to slide on that pipe. If that length is 10 feet long, I'm never going to be able to get to that far side.
You would have the other person. I'm just, I just don't remember if the length, from what I remember when I looked at it, the current length of the PVC pipe was different.
And it's supposed to.
It's supposed to.
Yes, alright. Each, each other one, you have three attackers on two defenders type thing. So, the idea here is, you don't want them letting go of that, because you might as well get rid of the pipe at that point, and you've just got soccer. The point of foosball is, you're anchored to this small piece, and therefore, you do have to run away over there, you do have to run away over there, because you don't want to have this, this wall of feet to go through. And so that needs to be smaller, if the rule is, you gotta keep your hands on the PVC. And so, yes, they do need to be alternating longer and shorter.
Okay, I envisioned it differently, so that's why I'm asking. I, you know, have played foosball in the past. Um, so if we, so if I understand it, we're at 21 feet post, 21 foot post now, Joe? So if we did change it, we're gonna have to put in different, or would we have, I'm assuming we'd have to put in different holes and move them, move them in?
At least once.
Yeah. So.
I think we've conceded that. Is it 14, 16, 18, or?
Right, my, so, so in, so in theory, by re-drilling the holes, we could, it, we would, um, the, the width between one or the other might be off by a couple inches, but we can, you know, look at straightening that one up, those couple out, or however many there are, I don't remember.
If that was our intention, as a council, we would instruct Joe to make sure that, within a plus or minus, that the left and right differences between the, the offense and defense is consistent. If we're relaying out one end, you pick the end that's most consistent right now, and relay out the other. So if we're okay with the, the one end concrete, we want the poles to be as evenly spaced as possible. We'd like to see them painted with an enamel, estolium, or appropriate outdoor paint. And what length would we like them to be?
Compromise at 18.
Yeah, that's what I was looking at. 18 works for me.
Alright. Paint should take care of the rust, the concrete. Half of them will be relayed, and spacing will be as uniform as we can make them. The length will be 18 feet, all one section, no joints. Do we want an inner pipe or not?
Just let them finish it, and if, if it bodes, you, you adjust, that's all.
Yeah. I think you're gonna add your weight by, you know, considerably if you put an inner pipe in there.
Does that inner pipe go end to end?
Yeah.
I don't know, that would matter then, if you're hooked on the ends, but. Is it stronger? Is it noticeably stronger when you do that? But do you think it bows less? With the inner pipe?
No, how can I say? It's all designed to kick apart, to change stuff out, so we can try without it, but getting some noise.
Will that, will that be the case when the fence is up?
Yeah, we'll be impressed.
Okay. Alright, any other comments?
Yeah. Besides the fence, we have to change the internal dimensions. We have to reduce the width for 25.
Yeah, and Joe's gonna take care of that.
Mr. Mayor. The only other comment I would have is if, if squareness is pretty decent, and we're, I would say, so then we pick one side, that we're, the side that we're gonna move, find the one side that the concrete's broke up the most, if it doesn't matter on our squareness.
Do you get that, Joe?
Pardon?
So when we're looking at which side to take out of the ground, which, which uprights to take out of the ground, the, we're looking at the condition of the concrete, we're looking at the spacing between the, the two rows, and the condition of the concrete to decide which case is most severe, take that one out. So which one is the concrete and the spacing best, leave that as your anchor side, and change the dimensions on the other side. Anything else? You care what color? You wanna go blue? Whatever's inexpensive, like we can find something on sale, a dark color.
Maybe there's a bunch of paint recycled, and every inch is all together.
Where'd you get that brown from? Anything else? Do we have enough information now to make a motion on Tuesday?
If the fence is the same price or less, we'll do our thing at council.
My opinion, if it's the same price or less, I prefer it to be less, because using less material.
Not much, it's six, it's gonna be six feet shorter as well.
But, but I would say if it's the same price or less, we've already authorized it. Council agree? Anything else on the foosball? Alright. Cat loader.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
I know, on the, um, equipment replacement schedule, that this year, the cat loader was, um, up for replacement. The current loader's 40 years old, it is leaking hydraulic oil, and the transmission as well is leaking. Uh, I know Joe has mentioned, it's not economical to drive it, to use it outside of the shop, but it's, is it's, you know, not very feasible to get from point A to point B, the four-wheel drive isn't working, so, he mentioned that he was trying to use it to move snow around, and it got stuck.
Me, just told you up there, before you beat it up too bad, we wanna sell this thing. And we do have it in our capital improvement bucket, budget, so, I would more accentuate, the new one needs to do the following. And, and I, I think the part here about taking pressure off the skid loader, and, uh, you know, something we could drive out on roads and move trees, and, so I, I think it's, it's additional capacity is really what we want emphasized. So nobody comes back and uses us.
Okay.
To lower our trade-in price.
Um, so, so Joe's looking at, to get, to get a loader that, um, has the quick attach with the auxiliary hydraulic in front, so that down the road, we can get other attachments, and he may put some attachments with some possible replacements, just for an example. That one did have a, a set of forks on it, so that's something that can be used, we can, uh, offset loader the skid loader, he mentioned that when they go out for trees, if, if after a storm, trees are down, it'd be nice to be able to take the loader out to help clear out some trees, instead of just a skid loader. Um, and down the road, if need be, we, we can add on a grapple bucket, a snow blower, you know, other, other attachments that are available. Uh, right now, he's been just looking primarily at Caterpillar or John Deere.
Any, uh, do current dealers have any used equipment? Do, do Deere or Cat dealers have anything right now? Used?
I think we're applying the price, and we're gonna stay in a semi-dollar range, we'll have to look outside to see. I did find one that's a work rate, so.
10 hours.
Two, five, five dollars something. I personally would be afraid of.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
I was looking on the Caterpillar site today, and I guess the one question that I just didn't know, um, what's the big difference between like a, uh, like a 936 and a 906? I'm just guessing the 906 would be smaller? Is, is, because there seem to be more used 906s out there. Um, is it, is it also a matter of how high it can lift?
It's that. I think using the 906, with the stuff I put parking lots and stuff.
The questions you had, that, that came up at the Road and Bridge was, the, uh, the lifting capacity and the height. Is the 930 right now, less than you would prefer it to be?
It's fine.
And so it lifts as much as you, as high as you need it to? Okay, so when you say, same size or size bigger, in, in current understanding, the, um, the 930s that are on the market are the same as the 930 we have now. Only current in their construction, but as far as its lifting capacity and lifting height, a 930 now is gonna be as same as our 930 before? A 936 is gonna be increased in that? How about, um, length, as far as getting into the places you want it to go to? 36 and 30 gonna be the same? Alright, other council comments or questions?
If they go out of state around, uh, trade-in value, we'll, we'll have statements, if you want to try it, still bid it often.
On the usual ones you're looking at, do you think there's trade value, or we have to go?
I honestly hear the talk room, I don't, I just wanna call one, and see what they do.
Okay, so how do we wanna approach this? We wanna give Joe authorization to be talking to people, to get us some specific information, so we know specifically what we're talking about for trade and, and feature and dollar. So, I think at this point, we authorize him to start his investigation in earnest, and bring us back information. That make sense to the council?
He could. It's gonna be like a fire truck, when you, you find what you want, the time it comes back to council is gone.
I think, I think that, that, one of the differences here is, um, we're dealing with a fire department that's already done this, on their side, and they've been watching us for a while, I think. We're, we're getting, Joe's starting to collect some information, and I think realistically saying, we're gonna get a bucket and maybe one or two attachments, but if we get them, like we said at the Road and Bridge, that, the, the must haves, and the would like to haves. Must haves, I've gotta have the, the quick, quick attach, I've gotta have this, I gotta have this. So if he defines those things, and then the things he'd like to have, within the price range, we can, we can then see what he's finding, and at the next meeting, say, you know what, we've got the money, you can go up to this much, make sure you get the must haves. So I think, for him, to at least do a little more research, find out what our trade-in is worth in this market, or do we have to just sell it outright to somebody else? And we have a little more information, would be helpful to have. Because we need to know if there really is any trade-in value on, on a purchase like this. Or we're back to selling it, or peanuts. Even though it's a really good machine.
It's an awesome machine, yes. Not exactly what we want, it's a tremendous job, but we need something more versatile.
To get, or, or to get them made often, this has been 15,000.
To them as a trade-in, or as?
As a trade-in.
Trade-in.
But you're generally even buy a machine to get for a few thousand dollars for that kind of price either, not, not here.
Well, that's, that's, I think, the question at hand, is, you know, if we go to one of these guys, are, is that thing worth anything on trade, or? Like, you, we gotta, listed a couple in here, like Michigan Cat, looks like is selling this one. You know, if we were to go buy this one, would they give us anything for that entry? Yeah.
And that's what I'm saying, I think Joe needs to ask some of those questions to us.
This, I'm pretty sure this exact same one on Equipment Trader is on Cat's, Caterpillar's site listing under their used machines. At least that's what it looked like to me. What?
I'm sure it is.
Yeah, so, I don't, I don't know how that works, you know, I'm assuming you're working with different vendors to, who's gonna bring in, get it sold, so.
Alright, so is it, is it clear enough what we're gonna ask Joe to do? How to get more information to us, so we can authorize him to proceed? Alright. I have a request on 20232 Wolf Ram, regarding the end of the driveway.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
Um, this resident mentioned that the, um, their, their end of their driveways, is their driveway's all concrete, and that their end of their driveway's been, was broken up, um, the, there was at least one incident where the, the, snowplow drove over a corner, um, and it, you know, broke off the corner, so I attached some pictures. I'm just wanting to, looking to get some information on how to handle these types of issues and resolve this one. Um, the driveway's not, uh, currently level to the, um, to the street, so I could, you know, so, if, you know, if there was something where the, anything went off a little bit, it isn't to the right of way, but, you know, it would easily, could easily catch a corner. Um, where, where does something like this fit in with to either fix or repair, or to repair the driveway, or, um, address the resident's issue?
Again, this is a cul-de-sac.
Mm-hmm.
And, I have been out and seen this, I did. And it does look like that cul-de-sac is a bit narrow. I talked to Joe about it, and there's a, there's a couple of things, that the second page of pictures is, is that where 203rd is going on to?
Sodium.
Sodium. And I talked to Joe about that before, it does seem to be, um, appropriate to fill that, and to grab, to blacktop over that. It seems to be, obviously, a radius where the people are not sticking to the blacktop. First thing I noticed driving out there was, was those potholes on either side entering that cul-de-sac. It did look like the cul-de-sac was narrow in the middle, you could see where we had driven off it when we were plowing, old upside, and where cars seemed to be going, I don't know if it's cars, or garbage trucks, or school buses, but they don't seem to be able to stay in the blacktop when they're making that. It does seem that we would want a smooth edge there. And, uh, I think that is something that we could work out a portion of it that's, that's in our right of way, and maybe go back to that expansion joint, or saw cut, or whatever it is there. Have the homeowner take a portion of it, we take a portion of it, but blend the blacktop together, and he can do what he wants with the blacktop to the concrete, but.
Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Rick, you are opening a huge can of worms. And by me looking at this picture, I see cracks everywhere in that driveway. So there's no way you can tell me with a certainty that by dri, that a snowplow went over that corner, and that's what broke it. So, you start repairing one driveway at any cost to the city, you're gonna get everybody in the whole town saying, hey, you guys did this to my driveway, whatnot, I, we are, you know, I live on a corner, my road's wide enough, and people cut the inside, regardless of the winter, summer, so I never get grass growing there, so it basically looks like this. But I don't expect the city to come out and try to fix that. I think if you even slightly suggest that the city pays to prepare any of that, you're gonna open a huge can of worms, and it's a big, big mistake.
I got brush going Monday, and I seen two cracks on two concrete driveways, both same like, they're one straight driveways. So I do, if, if you do one, it's only gonna do it.
Well, you look at the pictures, and cracks are all the way up the driveway.
And it won't be just concrete, it'll be bituminous, it'll be gravel, you know, if I, you're, you're plow cutting the gravel, it's gonna be on and on and on, there, that's a huge can of worms. Don't, you don't even wanna start. There are driveways for them to maintain coming into, onto our road.
So, even if we, even if the plow did, did make, did catch the corner, and it was, and we, and we had conversation, and the resident had conversation with staff about it, it's, and we haven't really, um, we don't say in our spec, I guess, we kind of assume that their driveway should be flush with the, the road, but we, but it's not inspected or enforced at all. Is it, is it still not our problem?
No.
No.
We've talked to the city attorney about it already, and he said it's in the road right of way, so it is not, it's, it's within our legal rights to maintain the roads and that.
And again, you know, in my opinion, based on the way the rest of that driveway's cracked, you can't sell me on the fact that that was done by the snowplow. You know, I could see if that was the only portion of this old driveway, the two corners.
Well, the plow came in straight, and to push snow.
But again, what about all these? It's all the way through here.
I understand there are other corners.
That's, that's the trades.
I understand there are other corners and other cracks. The plow came in straight into the cul-de-sac, and caught the corner of the driveway.
The plow didn't leave that.
As it, as it was just to, to clear off the, to clear off the blade.
No, the plow didn't.
I could see if, if the plow did make contact, because the concrete is doing something like this.
Actually, if the plow would've hit it, it would've done damage to the truck. They could be liable to the city for damaging the plow, because it's not, that driveway wasn't installed properly.
It ripped the concrete out, so we're looking at this crack.
That's a crack from way driving on top.
Okay.
As for the intersection, I probably, or what you've got across, you could, you could.
Great, yeah, we talked, we chatted about that on last week, thank you.
Alright, any else on that? And load evaluation, proposal from Shane. Questions on that?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
I'm, I'm not in favor of spending any more money on studies at this point, we, you know, when we came to city, we did capital improvement plan for roads, for everything. Uh, 2012, there was a full, uh, study on the blacktop roads, 2015, it's been updated. There's been thousands of dollars spent on it, and then none of the information's ever been used to, uh, finance the plan, so it doesn't pay to keep doing plans that you're not gonna fund. Shane, already from the 2012 one, said the minimum that we should have for years 240,000, we're not even gonna fund that.
Not even could.
So why, why do, why keep doing studies, and say we need more, we know the roads haven't gotten better.
Do you have a five-year capital improvement plan in place?
We keep, we, let's do one year. Let's do something in one year. We won't even fund that.
Any other comments?
It's 2012 plan, he had, he had a recommendation there, $240,000 per year. And we're getting close to that, if you do a 50, 50 assessment, you know, so if you got 120, so we should have at least 120 a year, we should be putting in there. So we're getting close to that now, but, but we're so far behind, we gotta play catch-up.
Any other comments on this?
Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Rick. No. We, it's obvious that we need to do something, it's, it's, like Councilman Bettinger said, I just hate throwing dollars, and they seemingly are going nowhere, you know. We did do the Road and Bridge study, and we didn't do anything with it, it's just, I know we need to, we need to come up with some plans, and we need to start taking some actions on, you know, our roads. Again, we haven't done anything significant for how many years? You know, again, you know, it's, it's all based on funding, we had the meeting the other night about how are we gonna fund it? Again, until we really know how we're gonna fund it, you know, I hate throwing money just out there for, for this or that, and the other thing. You know, I guess I, I was all in favor of, you know, if, if, Shane's already recommended that Old Viking needs to be overlaid. You know, we picked that as our first primary project, and just go ahead and do it. But again, even with that said, we gotta figure out a way we're gonna pay for it, and get the residents to buy in on that. So anytime you start talking assessments, nobody's happy.
Well, I, I agree, we don't wanna keep being reactionary, waiting for things to break down, and do them. I, I would like to see a formal, five-year plan, you know, based on the roads he's looking at, keeping the ones that are in decent shape, from becoming poor shape, and, and setting a plan to fix up the ones that have deteriorated. I think it's a good investment, I don't think it's just throwing good money after bad, I think it's a good investment, and, uh, you know, the discussions we've had is, yeah, there's a lot of money needed, where are we gonna get it all? I think this is a necessary step to find out if we can assess 50%. I, I don't know that we'd get away with, you know, 50%, other than, you know, the, the example we had, if the numbers are true on Old Viking, if we can spread it out over 66 homes, that seems more reasonable. Is it still within the 429 test? And we, we didn't ask that question, we didn't answer that question. But as we discussed in our meeting the other day, that same formula's not gonna work on, you know, road with 10 homes or 20 homes, as opposed to 66 homes. If we looked at, at Garnett as an example, wasn't that about $400,000, $500,000? And what is it, 20 beyond the street?
Not even, I don't think.
So I mean, that, that would be a completely different economics, and we wouldn't be able to assess that much. So I, I think that having a, 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 a plan in place that takes a variety of roads, including ones that we know what we spent on Ebony and Garnett in the recent, recent years, what we projected for Old Viking in the Rogers Lake area, but then these additional homes, saying, here's, here's how we can do a maintenance plan to keep it from deteriorating. I think this is a good investment, and a kickstart that we've needed. We've had a lot of frustration over, we haven't properly funded or, or, um, budgeted for it, because we didn't have a realistic plan. We had a big number on the road study, that says if you can do it at all, you gotta have 3 million bucks. And, and I think it needs to be a specific plan, that says, here's what we're doing, year one, year two, year three, year four, and five. We had a, every, every blacktop city street in that plan. We had a, every, every blacktop city street in that plan, but no specific plan forward in specific years. And I think this is a good investment and I think that we have money budgeted for engineering and we haven't utilized extensively in the past couple of years. I think it's a good investment and, and maybe the kickstart we need to help the road committee, the road advisory group and the, um, council work together to, to move forward on this, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rick.
Question to Cory. What funds do we have left in engineering for the year budgeted, do you know?
I do not, but, um, um, we haven't utilized a lot this year for engineering just because it's, it's basically we have two weeks of house plans and so a few things here and there.
So I guess, in your best guess, we have thirty-five hundred dollars in the budget?
Yeah. But I can confirm that, but I would have to say, um, we probably have well over ten thousand.
And, and again, in my opinion, okay, we, we do have money in the budget for it, but can we use that money elsewhere better? Yeah, I think so, but again, I don't necessarily think that this, based on the information Shane's gonna provide, is actually gonna truly tell you how to assess or what it's gonna do to assessments and how, you know, what it's gonna do to the property values and, and are you gonna be able to assess? I don't think you're gonna know that until you actually go through with the plan like Bob was talking about and start laying things out and actually specifically seeing what's the project cost, how many households are affected, you know, either directly or indirectly and, you know, get a guesstimate on what it's gonna be.
I think feasibility study's still absolutely gonna be necessary. But I think here you've got a plan saying, this makes sense over five years. Now when you do a feasibility study and you talk about how you're gonna assess it, when other people say, again, we know there's gonna be some, some pushback on the first ones if people are used to after all these years not being assessed. But we say, here's the plan, each year it's going to get less surprising to people because they see we're working a plan and they know we're coming to their neighborhood to make improvements that are valuable to them and we have a plan that says, our feasibility study says we're gonna assess a certain amount of this. I, I think that it, it gets the ball rolling on what we talked about at our last meeting on how do we identify, um, what needs to be done, identify how it gets paid for and what means we can do, whether it's levy or assessment or even potentially a portion of being monitored.
But what I'm stating though, even though we, Shane puts his plan together, that still doesn't tell you how.
That's the end, that's not the end, it's the start.
So that's why I'm saying, you, you start with a project like Old Viking that we've talked about. We already have kind of a cost, from there we, we need to know how we can pick. Because again, we could come up and have Shane do this for X amount of dollars, we could then still pick Old Viking and then realize based on cost and assessments, you know, through property value, that we may not be able to do it. And then what do we do? Now we just threw, what, thirty-two hundred dollars away that we just realized we, we didn't need to do it because we can't afford or assess, you know, the people on Old Viking.
But again, I think coming in with a plan is helpful because Old Viking may be the outlier. Old Viking may be the only one, we have that concentration of properties that, that allows us to distribute that money that efficiently. And, uh, and I, that's what I think, having a study here saying, the, the criteria for Old Viking would be different in this neighborhood and this neighborhood. And therefore, when you're talking about assessments or capital funds needed from the city, don't plant an Old Viking being your model. That's an outlier because of its cost versus its, its distribution of cost.
But his, his plan isn't gonna define that.
And that's my, that's my point.
And is his plan maybe, is it gonna be based on needs or is it gonna be based on what we're willing to finance? That's two different things and that's been.
Oh, I, I think, I think you gotta identify the needs over a period of time and say, hey, how are we gonna finance it?
We got the needs, we got the needs, we got a book full of them and we're not financing, we're not funding.
We can keep studying, we can keep talking and talking and talking.
Randy, where, where's the plan that you've had for financing it?
What, get up to two thousand twelve plan, you think things have really changed?
Yeah, I do. But, but again.
They have, it's got worse. It's, I bet you the, the condition, it's probably pretty much in the same order that he had in two thousand twelve and same order as two thousand fifteen. Just the prices have gone up.
All right.
And we continue talking and do nothing.
Anything else on this one? All right. I have one other question for Liz and depending on that, for the council. With the, um, the extended meeting we had last time at P and Z, we had seven public hearings. Five of those didn't get a actual hearing, we got continuation. Four of those had building plans involved with them. And the, the prospect of having a forty-five day extension on their plans puts them into the fall and might jeopardize some of those. So my question would be the continuation of the public hearings as to, the planning and zoning meeting on August twenty-second. Would, depending on, on the recommendations coming from the P and Z after those public hearings are completed, would there be sufficient time, Liz, to prepare something for council if we were to have a meeting to act on that immediately thereafter, say Thursday the twenty-fourth? If that could be prepared for those that were recommended to proceed, would then the council be available on the twenty-fourth of August to meet so that those people could have a yea or a nay and either put their plans to bed or put them into motion?
And Mr. Mayor, can I?
Councilmember Rick.
And that's why this whole seven o'clock meeting start time is ridiculous. In my opinion, if, if you have a P and Z meeting that you know have that many items and are gonna be pretty lengthy, why not change the meeting time rather than having a whole separate meeting?
Well, it's, it's.
Now you're taking up.
We, we had, we had three meetings this year we didn't even have, or within the last eight months we didn't even have. And then we end up with seven in one, one month.
But again, we were well aware of how many were on the agenda, so there's no reason why we couldn't have said, hey, because of.
Not, not the month before we weren't.
For last month?
We, we became aware when that meeting was planned, yeah.
Yeah, but that's what I'm saying, there's no reason why we can't then publish and state, hey, because of the.
Well, but, but you have to have a, a time definite, when you, when you post the public hearing, you have to have a time specific. We didn't know in our last council meeting there were gonna be seven public hearings at that time.
But in order to post them, we had to know about it.
Right.
So at the time of posting, we could've stated that because of the amount of items on the agenda.
Hey, well, that's, that hasn't come up before and.
And that's what I'm stating. Rather than us trying to schedule another, not separate meeting on an entirely different night, when we know things come up and we know when or if it comes up, that we could have an earlier start date, we should be able to do that.
Well, and, and I will say again, this was a bit of an outlier. I can't remember the last time we had over a hundred people at a planning and zoning meeting. I, you know, I don't know that we ever have since we've become a city. So I don't know, we knew what we were actually getting into. We knew that that one's gonna be longer. I, I still think we had a hope to, to get to the majority of them, the last one being more of a city action than a, an external request.
Well, 'cause you look at right now, budget-wise, we haven't even gone through anything really in the budget. And what, we're scheduled for one more meeting? We're gonna have to schedule more budget meetings. That's more and more meetings, it's just because we, we're not thinking ahead and we're not pre-planning. In my opinion. And again, in my opinion, there, it, we, the whole P, and it may not have still allowed us to get through everything, but at least it gives you X amount of more hours allotted in that night to try to get through it rather than wasting, you know, a, one other complete night. I don't know about the rest of you, but I do got other things going on too, so.
I'm not telling that week the twenty-fourth, so, but it, it doesn't set them back forty-five days, it's one month, it's thirty days. We would've made a decision next Tuesday and said it's gonna be next month, so it's really thirty days.
Well, it's not gonna be till September twelfth.
Yeah. It's one month, about a month and a half. And if it's.
We're gonna make something on the eighth instead of eighth of August instead of September twelfth, so, five weeks. And I'm just saying that if, if we did something on the twenty-fourth, we, um, we could move that up by two and a half weeks.
In the past, you know, as a township, they wanted it definitely passed, we actually made them pay for the extra meeting. I realize that it wasn't their fault that it got delayed too, but P and Z could've maybe had a second meeting and continued theirs.
Oh, P and Z did continue.
But they could've had a second meeting, they could've had a meeting this Tu- Tuesday and we could've had it for, for council.
Yeah, but, but we didn't know that, we didn't know if the, the, the applicants were available. When you continue it, you have to continue it to time and date specific. And not knowing if the applicants could make up their minds that quickly, if the staff could make up their minds that quickly. We, you know, at that point, it was ten o'clock, ten-thirty, you have to continue to a time specific and that's why we ended up picking the next P and Z because it was time and date specific, which is a requirement. Yeah, we, we debated that, can we have something in between, can we do something, can we stay longer? But it was, it'd been a long enough night as it was, so.
Well, I'm not available that week, so.
My question to the planner is, with the work you've done ahead of time and, and obviously you're not gonna know all the conditions of the IUPs, but you generally prepare finding a fact for or against going into that, would that even be a reasonable timeframe for you to have something for the council?
Yeah, I think it could work. Uh, they've got the extra month now to kinda work out some details, you know, of conditions that were specified previously, so. Um, yeah, the only trouble would be is if P and Z recommended some change. You know, they wouldn't have time to get it to you in two days. But, you know, it can, things can be made a condition of approval, it just depends what it is. It's my mom's birthday. But I can make it work. I am available the twenty-fourth.
So Randy is not, Mary is, Dan?
Uh, it can be, yep. Also, there's a, just throwing it out, that August is a five Tuesday month. I gotta look at my schedule 'cause I gotta travel out west towards the end of the month, beginning of September and went to Labor Day in there, I gotta figure out what, and other meetings I don't wanna miss. Like it's a little tactical.
All right, you'll let us know then?
Yep.
All right. Nine fifty-five, during the workshop.